Meeting in order. Good evening, everyone. City of Anamosa City Council Agenda Regular Session Monday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty six P M. Anamosa Library Learning Center via Zoom. One point zero roll call.
Here.
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 Note, all council members are present. Two point zero pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rebecca, for all of our friends that are joining us virtually, should you refresh them with the instructions on how to prompt yourself during the public comment section?
Absolutely. For those who are joining us via phone, which I don't think there is anybody, you raise your hand by dialing star nine on your keypad. For those joining us through your computers or mobile devices, you would choose either the raise your hand option or just send me a chat in the chat box. For those who don't know or can't see where the raise your hand option is, and I think that's mostly for people on a desktop, you should see a button called participants. If you click on that, you should see everybody who's joined us. And there should be an option at the bottom of that list that says raise your hand. So you can do either one of those things, raise your hand or send me a chat. Thanks.
Thank you, Rebecca. Three point zero approval of agenda.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Kay to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried unanimous. Four point zero motion approve the minutes from the following meetings. Four point one, August twenty four, twenty twenty, regular council meeting.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Jeff to approve the minutes and submit it. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion to approve carried unanimous. August thirty first, twenty twenty, work session.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Alan. Any further discussion? All those in favor of signifying the minutes and submitted signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carry, motion to approve carried unanimous. Five point zero, public hearings, none. Six point zero proclamations, none. Seven point zero, old business. Seven point one, resolution authorizing acceptance of real property donated to the city of Anamosa by Burrow Development. We have a motion by Rich, second by John. Any further discussion? Bryce, Sarah, do you have any comment?
I don't think so. Like, we already covered it.
Rebecca, is there any, anyone inquiring with public comment?
Not so far.
All right, well, this is a roll vote.
Aye.
So.
Aye.
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 I.
Aye.
Motion. Motion to accept the real estate property donated by Burrow carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Bryce and Sarah.
Thank you very much.
Eight point zero, new business. Resolution agreeing to become a member of the safety group East Iowa and IAMU agreement with appointed delegates. Are we sure? Yes.
Okay, you should be able to unmute so that you can talk.
All right. Thank you, this is Dave Reha. Last name spelled H R A H A. I'm with the Iowa Association of Municipal Utilities. And thank you for allowing me to speak for a few minutes here. Thank you, first of all, council and mayor for being a member, a water member of our services and also our safety services of our current eastern and central Iowa area support safety organization where you get your month-to-month face-to-face training. We know your staff time is limited and I believe at a previous council meeting at, I don't know how long ago it's been, maybe nine months or so ago, that you may have heard something about this regional safety coordinator position or group that we were starting in your area where we have a regional, where IAMU hires a regional safety coordinator to live and work in your area to be basically part of your safety team and be a safety coordinator for you through a twenty eight E agreement. We've now established a group just south of you, East Iowa, our safety group East Iowa, which is currently made up of our cities of Eldridge, Mount Vernon, Solon, Tipton, West Liberty, and Wilton. And they have capacity in that group to allow your city and a couple of others in your area to join with them to have this safety coordinator also serve your city. And that's what I am proposing to you tonight. We know that your staff has limited time, as I said before, and the code of regulations for the OSHA nineteen ten, nineteen twenty six, and all the ANSI standards that are go with that is almost, and the OSHA interpretation letters is hard to keep up with. So even, you know, very small towns and very large towns and cities have very difficult time keeping up with the regulations and how to manage their OSHA side of it. We here at IAMU, we've now established two large cities in Iowa where we have a regional safety coordinator just serving each one of those towns separately. We have a person in the city of Ames. We take care of also the safety program and we have a person assigned year-round to the city of Des Moines. We also have six of these safety groups around the state now. And your group, just where I'm proposing that you would join, that person that we hired just started September first. And that's why we're just restarting this process now that that group had established, as I said before. And now they're accepting others to come in since there is some room in that group to allow for a few more to come in. One of the handouts you probably were giving, given at one time or you, in your packet today is a safety and health management services. It will, it kind of gives you a rundown of the face-to-face training that you're getting now in the center column, but on the right-hand column is all the different services you get with this new regional safety coordinator. And I don't know if you want me to go through that in detail because you may have already read that at a previous meeting or have seen it, or you maybe you've already read it before this meeting. So just to know that it's a full-service position where we would help you with any of your safety needs. We would do training also as part of that. You would leave your current safety training group that you're with IAMU and then you get your safety training from this next group. But you also get all those other services on top of just education and training. And all the training, unlike the previous agreement that you have with us now where multiple towns show up, this would be only training for you, training on your procedures and processes. So it is specific to your locations and more valuable to your staff. We do lockout, tagout machine specific procedures, job safety analysis, update all your written programs. It, the final thing, I probably just rounded off to just say that this new agreement, well, your current agreement you're getting just safety training from is expiring at December thirty first. And that's January first would be the next contract year if you were to join that group. And currently you're paying nine thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and eighty cents for the safety training. To join this new group as a regional safety coordinator, lives and working your area, and you get those full services, that will be seventeen thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars for a year. Of course, you'd be prograded because we would have you come in January first of twenty twenty one. So tonight, I just opened it up if you have questions for me. Otherwise, that is what I'd be asking you. We're also given a resolution and if you're interested, we would happy to have you in the group. And the new group is called Safety Group East Iowa.
Well, I've got a question for you. Some of these services they do, like for the analysis and reviews and so forth, do you do those annually or are they only upon request?
No, we would be doing it as, as, one of the first things we will do is do a risk assessment to see where you're at. We're doing that currently with the group that just started, the Safety Group East Iowa. And we're going to come up with the priorities list from the analysis of. What we're doing is on our risk analysis, we find out through severity, exposure, and probability, what are the highest risk programs that you have out there that are exposing your employees to injury and maybe more serious instances. And so we'll come up with a program and a list of which program to start with first because we don't want to spread the regional safety coordinator's time or attention to ten different programs because this town wants one thing. We want to kind of stabilize and have everybody working on the same program at the same time that we will do that. We, with your staff, because we do have to collect data. We do have to job shadow on a lot of these programs to get the data to create your written programs and your processes. So we will customize them for you. You don't have to ask eventually, you'll be getting all of these services. And, you know, on top of all these services, you know, some of these on this checklist show, we're going to do job site analysis as in stop at your work zone, safe, you know, and check out your excavation setup then, or your work zone set, setup, that type of thing. We can, we'll be doing that part of it too. Participate in or help you establish a safety committee if you haven't already had one or you want some more assistance in that. But again, we're there to be a resource for you and to be your safety coordinator. Did I answer your question fully?
Not exactly.
I'm sorry, Ben.
I mean, you're going to come in, you're going to do the initial analysis. Then are you going to come back in a year and review that and come up with another analysis? Or are you going to say, we did that and in the future, if you want us to review it, you need to request it?
No, we'll continue to re-reviewing and updating programs as we go year by year. It doesn't stop at one year because constantly things need to be updated. Knowing that from this list you're looking at, you can't get all that done in one year. There's just no way. That's why this, this program is a, if you were to join, it is a three-year commitment. And after the three-year on the, off the twenty eighty, it goes to a year-to-year obligation or option at that, at that point. So we, if I think I answered your question correctly, you know, we will go in, you don't have to, yeah, if you can need something, you could surely ask us for sure. But if, we're going to have a organized way of doing this too where through the service agreement, you do have a delicate part of a coordinating committee that represents your city. And so that coordinating committee will meet two or three times a year with us, myself and my, the regional safety coordinator and to make sure that we're on track to what you want us to do, what was planned to be done. And so you're comfortable what we're doing. And so we, we do have a responsibility and a way to hear your feedback and get correction. So you'll have that anyway directly by just, you know, your, your employee just talking to our regional coordinator to make any changes or anything that you need to have done. So as I said, a lot of these things, you just don't get done one year. It's, it's a multiple-year process. We've been in the city of Ames for ten years now. And you just keep on, there's new process and new machines, you have to reevaluate machines. It just keeps on year by year by year.
Would you talk about the qualifications that your regional safety coordinator has as far as their background and training?
Oh, yeah. And again, training just is just a part of what all the services you do get from us. The person that we hired is, he has his, not only his bachelor's but a master's degree in, in, in safety. He's been involved with construction safety and, and other forms of safety companies for the last fifteen years. He is from the area. He's currently in Texas, being, moving back here. But he always had a home here, still has a home here in, in your area and then is moving back. He has tremendous amount of experience. He has worked in this just recent job for the last five years at a lot of, in charge of a lot of construction crews and activities of those crews in the safety field at a, at a, let me see, I don't think it's an army facility, but it is a military facility down in San Antonio, Texas. So it is a big military base is what I was trying to think of that he has worked with, the Army Corps of Engineer has, has quite a big extensive background. Is, he, we're very impressed with him. Even before that, in, here in Iowa, he worked for, as a contractor with a contracting safety company in eastern Iowa.
Thank you.
Um. Yeah, let's just say for whatever reason, we don't join. I'm just going this way. If we don't join, what does that do to the other cities as far as their abilities to have this individual in the area? Do you go out and search for another community to fill this lot? You know, let's say if Dyersville doesn't join, does that change the complex, the complexity of this individual that would be in our area?
No, the east, the Safety Group East Iowa has already been established. As I said, they've already started receiving service, services from Joey at beginning of September. And what, what, we do have a certain amount of revenue that that person needs to bring, bring, bring in. And if you saw on that, you know, it's, well, that's not the total amount. It takes a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to fully fund a person on our staff and, and being remotely, have a car and all those types of insurance. And so what we do is, under the existing East Iowa group, they've been able to have enough work for him to have like seventy, I can't remember, seventy-some percent of that person's time. The rest of the amount of the, of the person's time is spent on doing safety education through one of our other existing contracts right in that same location, our East Iowa area support safety group. They would do safety education for that, for them. So he stays in the same area, but he does some more training often on another contract that we have in that area.
And you've got our population at five thousand three ninety-one. Considering we've got, what, about a thousand some that are residents of the state of Iowa, does that make a difference?
No, we go completely by whatever the census shows us. If that's not correct, or is that, is that the correct number for, under the census?
Under the census, it wouldn't be.
Yeah. Because that's how the twenty eighty was written up and that's, yeah. I should point out that that is about, when it was previously brought up to the council about a, earlier sometime this year possibly, that number was twenty-two thousand, a little over twenty-two thousand dollars. But, but because of the way the new central Iowa group figures their allocation, we were able then to bring your amount down to the seventeen thousand seven seventeen.
How often will your personnel check in with the city? A program that that requires certain amounts of time or certain days of the month or week where they stop in and see how things are going or anything like that?
Oh, absolutely. As I say, all the education and training will be done individually for your, your city and your, your different department. So the regional coordinator was set up that time with the departments of when they want their training. The training will be a lot shorter than what is now because it, right now it's more generalized and you have to cover bigger, more scenarios where our training will now, since we'll know your processes, can be a lot shorter training and get to the point and get your people back on, crews back out. But what we plan to do too is when they're there doing the training, that they have already pre-arranged with your, with your other staff to do the job shadowing or to review the processes or programs you're currently doing. So they're spending the day there other than coming in, doing training and leaving. They're, they're going to stay there and do and collect data for what they need for the program they're working on at that time. So I would have fully expected that you see them at least two or three times a month. But then they're also available for calls or on-call for an incident that you need to have somebody come out because you need some assistance in doing a investigation on the incident or if you need some follow-up with the OSHA, that type of thing. They're, they're available for that. Plus, we also have our other staff on here in Ankeny area that can assist with any of those issues too. So we not only have their safety coordinator, we have a vast number of safety coordinators within our facility that can assist if need be too. So you expect them to see them pretty often. We would expect them, you know, when you get new people, we can possibly get over there during that first week when they're starting, maybe even the first day and give them a safety orientation. It just needs to be coordinated, let us know, that type of thing, so they can rearrange to get there when you got the new people starting.
Is there a priority on these different level or different programs that they would do sooner than others, I guess? Say it?
Through the risk analysis we've done with our other groups, we usually find the top three or four are like fall protection, confined spaces, PPE assessments and job safety analysis. You know, those are usually the top three that we'll start working on usually first. It's typically, I have found fall protection and confined space. The last couple of reviews we've done, PPE assessments and JSAs have hit the top of the list and then fall protection and then confined space. So it depends on the group and what all the individual cities and utilities have in that group. What percolates to the top is the most serious for your area.
Just like you asked me, the ones that are, have asterisks that say additional fees, like audit billions for hazards. I mean, that one had popped out, but, but those other ones, are they just kind of like an add-on for one? Or is there a range of what those additional things might run?
When you're looking at additional fees, what are you seeing that?
Um, just on this, I don't know if you can see what I'm looking at, just that chart that showed if it's included or not.
That middle column was if, if, on the existing system which you're in, outside of training, everything you, if you were to ask us to do that, it would be a fee for service. Our current fee for service charge is like a thousand one hundred and seven dollars a day. But since you're going into this full-service group, you don't have to pay that. Yeah.
But it would all be included if we went this route.
Correct, that's included with your new service.
This is a question for Beth. Out of those asterisk items, does EMC provide any of that safety evaluation for us, the insurance?
That's a good question. We usually coordinate this with our, you know, like, it's all kind of intertwined with JAP.
So.
Because we get our dividend.
Right, because I know she, she talked about EMC having some safety coordinators and so forth. So wouldn't we have any overlap or is there something we're already getting there? We wouldn't necessarily need out of this.
Right.
We work with EMC all the time because that is the IAMU EMC insurance program that you're in. So we're, we're nested together, the EMC and us. And they do have some services that they do provide. When they do a mock OSHA walkthrough type, it's not mock OSHA walkthrough, it's more of a risk assessment looking at fire hazards, things like that, that are going to burn up the building, destroy a building, that type of thing. Where we would go in more, look on the OSHA violations side. So though we do similar things, they don't get into a lot of education. They don't get into onsite, full-time services, that type of thing. So I'm not. So I'm not undercutting what EMC does at all because they are partners. But we we have worked with them and have and they're excited that we're offering this to our members. Because this is something that they can't give this level of service. To our common members, so.
Well, I just remember when we were talking about we're calm. I thought she'd said something about.
It's the it's the.
It would be these guys that they bring in.
Yeah.
Okay.
For the risk assessment.
Yeah, and that's a free service through us. We're having Dave Eaton come in and do a risk analysis because he's a risk manager also. And he will work hand in hand with our regional coordinator too and with your EMC agent in in your town. To to hopefully find other ways to maybe saving you money on different insurance items or ideas.
You have said that the regional safety coordinator is in the area. Can you be specific as to the town?
He is going to be living in Columbus Junction.
How many personnel do you have to service all these cities?
I'm sorry.
How many personnel do you have to service all these cities?
How many staff members do I have just for safety? Our safety staff is currently 12 staff members. Currently for regional coordinators or coordinators that are assigned individual cities, we have. Seven.
Just just being concerned, I want to make sure you're not spreading yourself too thin between cities.
Right. We. We, as I say, we have sort of these other groups around the state and and the sweet spot is around nine, 10 cities. Even even though even other groups that we have seen that aren't ours. That's that's usually the number they kind of keep it at nine or 10 entities.
Have the department heads been said anything about what they think about this program?
Jim's the only, well, Jim's the one that usually coordinated. So last year at their annual meeting when you set the schedule for the training. I went with Jim. So Jim generally does that meeting with someone else's staff. Everybody did the OSHA 10. Usually I try and send out the email for the virtual training TM going on right now. It's a little hidden. This, I mean, it's been a little different since we haven't been person. As far as like usually we'll have the class if it's us who see they're here. But they've been online.
So are they online? Should we join this? Would it be online or would they? Would your safety coordinator be coming to our town and meeting with our staff in person?
Depending on your comfort and if your city is open open for that. We we can do the face to face visits. But it's what your comfort level, if you're allowing public or others to come in as a contractor. To visit with your staff. Most of the time, you know, other than education or training. We're going to be probably one on one, one on two people, you know, one or two of your staff with with the safety coordinator. Otherwise in classes, you know, until the COVID. Backstage comes out, it's reliable, effective, that type of thing. In your comfort level, we would probably want and we have some guidelines too. We want to make sure we're social distancing wherever classrooms we're in. We may have to do some of it in the shop where we can spread out a bit further, you know, it just. It's case by case basis on each city.
Do you have more than one city of the class?
For for this new group? No, we would not. We would. It would just be animosa staff. The I should take that back. The only one that we would have. Other cities that may join together to do it is the high voltage classes. And so for you, I think that would only be like your bucket truck rescue class.
City enters into this agreement, they we have to name a delegate that serves on the. Coordinating committee.
Correct, please. Yeah.
Will will that individual be responsible for conducting? Some of the internal training?
No.
It will all be facilitated through your group.
Right, they your delegate will be on the service agreement, I think you have. Or was it the? Hold on. The. Yeah, on the 28E agreement itself. Well, it breaks down the coordinate coordinate committee members duties. That's on page two of the 28E agreement. Which basically is making sure that we're fulfilling the requirements of the service agreement to you. Getting your feedback, that type of thing. Plus, there are probably our main contact. Between the regional coordinator and and you. Whoever you assign that that probably the main person we would go to with some of our questions, things like that.
So then if there's any internal policies or procedures that need to be drafted, implemented. Would it be the responsibility of the city's delegate? To create those or will it all again, will that all be done through your organization?
Since it is, you know, going to be a policy, if it's a safety policy for sure, we would help write it. We, you know, if you need to come up with some. Policy on eyeglass wear or whatever it might be. We we would help write that because we want to make sure that we. Do it in a way that fits your culture. And so we probably would need some input from. From your staff to make sure it does fit you correctly. But we would definitely. Come up with something and 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 run it by whoever and see if you approve of it and we can make changes after that. But so, yes, we would. We would be actively involved in writing your policies when those come up.
I've got a question about I see here where you're talking about. After the three years, this will automatically renew for one year unless before six days are up. We. Write a letter terminating the agreement. But then you all, but then you also talk about. For subsequent calendar years, about a 3% for the increase in cost determined pursuant to the most recent available consumer price index. For the urban Midwest. How soon do you notify us of what your potential increase would be? That'd be in advance of the 60 days. So if it goes up too much, we can terminate the contract. Or when do you make that notification?
Yeah, we'll have to do that like the quarter before. You know, like the three months, you know, the well, a quarter before the end of the contract. So you know what it what it's going to be.
So do you say that in here?
No. It's just an internal thing we're going to have to do. The 28E agreement has been already approved and and submitted to the Secretary of State. So. There is no. Way to change that now. So we're just kind of. Since you were joining this other existing group, you're kind of just stuck to whether approve or not approve. The existing service agreement and the 28E. Because well, if you join, we'll be submitting just an amendment to the 28E to the Secretary of State.
In the past, we have been a part of the existing safety group. And receive the services that are shown on the chart. Then in addition, there are fees for service. Can you tell me how many times in the last two years? For example, we've used any of those fees for services?
Well, I don't know if I don't know if you have. It doesn't mean that you maybe shouldn't have. I don't know if you have. I without going back and looking, it's just me see if we've ever had additional services that we've built animosa for. I'm not sure. Maybe Jim would know Jim Hansen. So I'm not sure.
But our safety has been lagging in the last few years.
Well, it really wouldn't hurt to have a full risk assessment done in all departments. That that I do agree with.
Well, and we know there've been some issues of late where behavior hasn't been exactly appropriate. For the situation.
And I think they're having the one on one increases to participants. Like where it was kind of hitting this with the with the classes, you know, sending them out or I posted. You know, the OSHA 10 is really probably the last one that we had a pretty much full attendance for. So I mean, I think it's. I think with that person coordinating is more of the years today.
So. His water wastewater street. Had an opportunity to review this proposal. Those would be the three. Departments within the city that would be most affected by this, not to exclude. The parks, the LCC or even the library. Have you got any feedback from department heads regarding this proposal?
No, because this was proposed a while ago and I don't know where. I don't know Jim. Rebecca's Jim on there?
I see Jim is on.
Yes, Jim is on here. I would say that sometimes you're a little quiet, so.
Could you unmute him, please?
Sure.
Can you hear me?
Hey, Jim. Thanks for. Thanks for being in attendance virtually. I do have a question. Have you had an opportunity to review this entire proposal? That. Dave has. Brought to us this evening.
Not word for word, but I did go over quite a bit on that. On that proposal and it was during our last meeting in Macokata. I do agree with any services that IAMU proposes. I did think it was a little bit expensive. My directive towards this is trying to get more people to show up at the meetings, which I know sometimes we're busy. We can't get to that. Those are some of the things that I want to see get done. With the meetings and with this happening. There's a gentleman that'll be there or a person that will be there to show that. Show everybody the do's and don'ts of what we should be doing and what we shouldn't be doing and some of the questions we need to be, we need to answer. Robert and I went over quite a few things with this. And one of the key issues were that I had struggled with for a couple of years now. Was the binder works. The binder works is a is a key issue for all our departments. So that we don't get cited by OSHA for the SDS, which is the safety data sheets. They come in, they review everything that's in our departments and each and every one of them. And then they will assess it, make sure everything's on the computer and everything's done for emergencies. So with that being said, and the safety program that he is they are talking about. I am I'm real happy to hear that this is happening. I just know there's a little bit of an expense to it. But I have tried to get this previously.
Well, I guess to to further with that. From what you have seen, you you can get behind this, just that the. The additional cost gives you a little bit of heartburn.
Yes, sir. And you did see Jim, the the price did go down from what we originally had talked about.
Yes, that is true. Yep. That is better, to be honest with you, Mayor.
With certain, we're seeing an $8,000 increase, give or take some change here. But you know, with a good safety program, it certainly or certainly save you money as well. I'm not trying to take anything away from this. But we're currently just south of $9,500 with our the current program. And we're looking at a obviously a $17,700.
About an $8,000 increase.
Spread that over a years period of time. The advantage, yeah. You're trying to put all this together. Kind of makes sense if you have a company or anything. That is focused on this day in, day out. And comes into the city and forces us to focus on it also. I think. Gail made a good point, we kind of lax on safety at a point. They're coming in and taking care of this. It's something that's excuse me, it's sidestep by the departments and by the employee. Because it's not in their face all the time. Something like this does pick up the ball when we're dropping. It does make sense that. And I agree with Jim. He and I talked about this when I first got on the council. He was showing the the safety data sheet system that he's got. What he was hoping would happen. And this is something that would happen. I know all about safety data sheet body shop.
Well, I think probably it's not going to happen right away, but over time. We might be saving a pretty good chunk on our work comp rate, which in turn will offset the increase.
Yeah.
Or close to it.
Will help anyway.
It'll help quite a bit. I mean, truthfully, I'm I'm willing to give anything a try once. And yeah, it's for three years. But we'll just have to make sure we get it on the calendar to. If we don't get notification of what that increase is going to be before 60 days before the end of this renewal period. What happens if we terminate and then you finally get it to us? Can we reinstate for the one year term?
Yes, the the three year term at the very beginning was just to make sure because we're going to we hired the person. And just, you know, putting on a new staff member, we just want to make sure that they have some stability. and just, you know, putting on a new staff member, we just wanna make sure that they have some stability in when changing jobs. So that's why we did a three-year at the beginning.
Can I add one other thing in?
Sure.
Not only does it help our employees, this helps out the public also, because we do a lot of safety programs with first aid, defensive driving. I could go on and on with all the things that IAM, IAMU has to offer. But public safety is one of the, one of the big things also. They go over diseases, like I said, first aid, even defibrillators, you name it. So there is a lot of advantages to not just the employee, but to the public also. Thank you.
Is this, is this something that you'd work with the fire department as well? Because I know, I believe historically, there's been a pretty big chunk of work on on the fire department. Is that something that will be done too, or could be done?
Your fire and police are gonna be your higher workman's comp across the state. Typically, no, this agreement is not for the fire and police, mainly because their main focus and main training comes from other organizations other than OSHA requirements. Now, the only thing that they do fall under OSHA is like their buildings, things like that, and we're willing to do, look at that. There are some programs, I think, that we should, we could look at a little more closely, especially in the police, the Lexi pole system that EMC is offering for the police department. And so, yeah, that's my answer.
Not to change it, but because it's so prevalent right now, do you work with or help plan for pandemics?
Well, that will be part of the emergency action plan. When when you get to that program to include procedures and guidelines for when those types of things come up, we would probably definitely be be involved when, if this was to come up. You know, what came up in March, next month, we would be probably helping our cities with some guidelines and things like that. And and again, following a lot of the CDC requirements and and guidance in the state Department of Health, we would, you know, definitely. But that will be part of your, definitely your emergency action plan.
So Jim, who's your alternate, alternate right now? Do you have one?
I think we went back on.
Does it, who's our alternate right now, or do we have an alternate?
I don't know. We have one. I mean, I was Jim last time, so I get all the emails, so I maybe just voluntarily.
Okay.
But I know elaborate.
Yeah, he's he's not in a position to fill that's why. So I don't know. Is that, should we have another department head as an alternate? Do we have that as an alternate? You have any problems?
It would seem that a department head would be reasonable, because they would be ones that are directly affected by.
Right.
What I read through, we we are to name one individual upfront. You know, anything after that, to me, I think we could just do internally. There's no.
Well, I'm just looking at this sheet that says alternate on it.
Well, okay. I was just reading through the the text of the agreement. I didn't see anything with alternate.
Yeah, this is the resolution. So with with that, I guess I'll make the motion to join with Jim Hansen as the appointed delegate and Dan Smith as the alter.
Second. I just have one more, but.
Okay.
Is there a way we can require the people to be there? I mean, I've been around a lot of times and they never showed up or they never went. And it's always the same.
Well, I I think that is going to be a part of the job descriptions. Should be part of the job descriptions that they must attend. That's not gonna affect this agreement, but.
Yeah.
But but yeah, I agree with you. If we're gonna do this, this isn't for a select number, it's for everyone.
Yes, exactly. That's what I meant.
Yeah.
That's how we solve a lot of the problems. I would like to think first, Gail had job description. If we don't have it in there and there's a problem, job description can solve it.
I would like to think, you know, just under $18,000 cost that the program applies to everyone.
Well, the other part of this is they come to here, they're they're coming here, whereas we're not sending people to a class. There, these are gonna be more hands-on and everybody better be involved. And if they're not, then we've got another issue we need to address.
I agree. Before we conclude and go to vote. Dave, as I, as I look over the listing of the communities, so there's, there's nine total communities. Some with dual listings. I just, can you assure me that adequate time will be provided to address the safety program in the city of animals? And that your individual or individuals are not too thin to get a top-level safety program in place? Can you assure me that?
What we've experienced in the past of all the other groups that we have and and the individual agreements that we have, like for the city of Des Moines and Ames. Yes, the, the time that we would spend, I mean, and that's why, another reason it's a multi-year agreement. You, you're not gonna put a full safety program in in one year. It's it's impossible. There's, there's just too much to try to pull together and and get everybody's buy-in and then get everything, new programs and processes written up and put in place. So, yes, and, and this is, as I said earlier, this is a good typical size group that I've seen not only IAMU use, but other organizations use about that percentage of number of entities to a regional coordinator.
Well, if this passes, I guess the proof will be in the product.
Right. And we're gonna meet, you know, and that's part of the regional, or the coordinating committee, especially the first year, first year and a half. We're gonna meet at least three to four times a year, just to make sure everybody feels that they're getting what they need. And if we need to make adjustments right away, you know, we can do that. And so that's why the coordinating committee is there too.
Is there any other questions from the council, Dave, Beth, or anything related to this agenda?
Your Honor?
Rebecca, is there any public comment?
Mayor, this is, I'm back on. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Jim.
I do appreciate being the delegate. I am very excited about this to get the safety program going through. So I, I do acknowledge that I'm the delegate and I do appreciate you putting me on that. Thank you.
We look forward to the the work you do, Jim.
You bet.
Rebecca, is there any other public comment?
So your, the city attorney does have something he'd like to say.
Your Honor, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can, Patrick. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, not a problem. I I just wanted to let you know that I have not seen this, but I would be happy to review it so that at least you know, you know, what those terms are. And and if I have any issues, I would let you know. I, I heard the comments. Normally, when you sign a 2080 agreement and you've gone around to eight or nine cities, right? And they've got a document they're working with, it's gonna, you know, be difficult for us to then say, hey, we've got some objections, because they've already got this 2080. But at least, if you want, I can, I can take a look at it, at least let you know if there's any issues that I'm concerned about. I understand what's going on here, and I think it's a good idea to have a safety program. But it just, I'm just letting you know that I'd be happy to look at it, and I haven't had a chance to see it, so.
Well, I'd like to amend my motion to include a review of the city attorney.
And I can, I can do that pretty quickly. I mean, I'm not gonna delay a great deal. I can get something back to you in writing what what I, what I think, any issues I see in the next few days, and you'd be more than ready to go at the next meeting with us if you wanna go forward.
Dave, if if we were to table this for another two weeks and then at our next meeting, take this to a vote, would would that be acceptable to you, just to give our attorney time to look over some of the fine print? Things like this are best left for the experts.
Absolutely, that's fine, because as I said earlier, January 1 would be the start of it, since that's part of the 2080 agreement. You know, you can only join at at the first of the quarter, each quarter. So plus, if your city attorney has any direct questions to me or IAMU, please feel free to contact me.
Thank you.
That's fantastic. And Beth, if you could just shoot me that agreement and do you have an email address that that Beth has? I assume you do, probably.
Yes, Beth, Beth has it.
Okay, that'd be fantastic.
Rich, I don't know if that changes how you want to proceed.
I'm just gonna leave it as pending the acceptable review by the city attorney. Leave it at that.
John, you were the one that seconded that amendment. Are you good with, or the the motion, are you good with Rich's amendment?
Yeah, that's fine. That's good. And the review.
I don't know, Beth, if this takes it to a final approval through our vote? Or do we need to revisit that again in two weeks and that become the file?
No, I don't just depend on this review.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, I will turn this over to Beth for the roll vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Unanimous, the motion carried unanimously pending Patrick's review on the verbiage. Dave, thanks for taking time out to present this this evening. And I guess you'll be hearing from us.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thanks for your time.
8.2 Resolution endorsing a grant application for funding through the Iowa Department of Transportation to revitalize Iowa's sound economic, economy rise program.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, could whoever was just talking speak up? We can't hear you.
I was just saying that I did hand out an updated resolution. Some of the verbiage was changed from what I understood could pass out.
Rebecca, is there any public comment on this?
Uh, no, there isn't.
There's no further discussion. Beth, will you conduct the roll vote?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Motion to approve carried unanimously. 8.3 Resolution approving the official Iowa Department of Transportation financial report for city streets and parking for fiscal year ending June 30, 2020.
Approved. Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Jeff. Any further discussion? Rebecca, any public comment?
There is none.
Beth, would you conduct the roll vote?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Yes. Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimously. 8.4 Discussion Possible Action for Downtown Task Force Wayfinding Signage. I mentioned to Beth before the meeting started that the task force meeting on Friday had to be postponed. So there's, there's no, no new information to present. So this can be tabled for two weeks. They will be ma- meeting this Friday. Hopefully, there'll be more information. Just to let you know, they are pursuing this wayfinding signage. It was one of the items that, when the task force was here last fall, that they had identified. So not to go into any, to deep in detail, they are just looking to, for signage to direct people to certain points in the downtown or in the community. As you get closer to downtown, signs will be there to notify you what direction certain amenities are. And also, as you leave or exiting off the highway, signage is there to, you know, lead you into the downtown area and other points of interest. That's what they're looking at now. Little bit of consultant work possibly to, so when you hit the mark with this. But that's more information that can come. That is one of the items that they are looking at and working on right now.
Would would this include, when we had the joint meeting with the school board, they requested signage for pointing towards the high school, the middle school, the elementary school? We talked, be a part of this. Got talked about that.
No, we didn't have any action for that. It wasn't our discussion.
Came up in conversation.
Kind of, you know, someone that's in the the signage business that is, as a consultant on site, you know, they'll come in and identify our gaps where where we could certainly use some signage. We can point that out to them, you know, let's, let's, let's be considerate of, you know, schools. We, we, we had talked about, it's difficult for people to find certain fields that they're looking for.
Especially with the intersection closed, you know, people, they come around and then they get kind of mixed up. But it's not a bad idea if we get this camera out, you know, in front of by the school and I, I could see them paying for, you know, sure, their school's, or their portion of it.
And right, but it should be worked in as as one type of a program at one time, as opposed to haphazard. Then you can kinda get the signs looking similar or keep up kind of uniform.
I would, I believe that we would work with the schools jointly on that, yes. So just like to table it for two weeks, and hopefully we have some solid information to present at that time. 8.5 Resolution requesting reimbursement from the Iowa COVID-19 government relief fund.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Kay. Any further discussion? Rebecca, any public comment?
There is not.
Beth, would you conduct the roll vote?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yeah. Yes. Yes.
Motion to approve carried unanimously. Eight point six, request for appointment of Nancy Schaefer and Heath Engelbart to fill vacancies on the Animosa Parks and Recreation Board.
Approved.
Motion by Rich, second by Alan. Uh, any further discussion?
Just add, I said on the Park Street Board, and there was a lot of interest, we, you know, the, the voting member in the committee voted. Five or six people that were interested, so there's, there was a lot of interest, which was nice to see. A few more openings coming up next year, so.
Rebecca, is there any public comment on this?
Nope.
All those in favor of appointing Nancy Schaefer and Heath Engelbart to fill the vacancies on the Park and Recs. Uh, board signify with aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carried unanimous. Eight point seven, request by Jerry Colwell for front porch burglar carport variance at one oh eight South Sales Street. A motion by Rich, second by Galen. Any further discussion? So I see that this carried through, uh, the variance board, uh, unanimous on those that were in attendance to vote.
July.
Yes. Like it to catch.
Is it two separate structures? I mean, two items.
One of them is attached to the porch, and I believe the other one's attached to the carriage house rods.
Detention.
Yeah, I, I drove by it. It looks nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there any public comment, Rebecca?
I do not see any.
Isn't, uh, all those in favor of approving the variance? For Jerry Colwell's front porch burglar, signify with aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carries unanimous. Eight point eight, request by Jerry Colwell for carriage house carport variance at one oh eight South Sales Street. Motion by Rich, second by Jeff. Any further discussion? Any public comment, Rebecca?
No, there's not.
All those in favor of approving Jerry Colwell's carriage house carport variance at one oh eight South Sales Street signify with aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carries unanimous. Eight point nine, renewal of liquor license dollar general. With motion by Kay, second by John. Any discussion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carries unanimous. Eight point ten, review and approval of current bills. With a motion by Jeff, second by Rich. Just a few seconds to review. There's any other questions?
There is not. Does two thousand volt service by house be heavy equipment? What was that for?
Beth, could you repeat that? We can't hear you.
I believe it's by how many hours of service that they have experienced.
Is that wastewater that used to be streets? Is that an inverter or what is it?
Probably the streets. Newer than that.
It was new, new.
And the two thousand newer, or the one that wastewater, that thing.
So somebody had the first year out of there, or somebody had a second one or?
Unless it should be, I don't know, three thousand business.
Where is that at?
Um, it's, it's house be heavy equipment.
It's six, five, seven, eight, two.
Yeah.
So yeah, it's performed the two thousand hour service on the machine.
Oh, the two thousand. Okay.
And I believe it says it's still under warranty until two thousand twenty-three. So it looks like it's.
Yeah, it should be like, what, two thousand eighteen? Yeah, something like that.
Oh, two thousand hour, I put it says two thousand.
Well, so it's two thousand. Yeah. Okay, okay, that makes more sense.
And it did say what year it was in the report. Two thousand seventeen.
Twenty twenty B, that.
Uh, it's just giving the. L sixty-eight roll.
That makes more sense. I was thinking that two thousand was the year. What, what is that piece of equipment?
Any other questions with the bills? If not, all those in favor of paying the bills as submitted signify with aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion to approve payment carries unanimous. Review, excuse me, eight point eleven, review and approval of August Treasury report. Motion by Rich, second by Alan. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of accepting the Treasury report as submitted signify with aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carries unanimous. Nine point zero, city administrators report. Beth, that was your.
So far, we're still waiting for storm damage insurance plan. I've sent them a few other things since they're been out. See, we did hold our department meeting on Friday. Um, we discussed cell phones. Uh, some things we're going to look at with the new accounting system. The COVID reimbursement resolution, so we pretty much narrowed down vendors. We got a lot of the COVID supplies run. Um, a lot of the reimbursements were actually police and cruise wages for emergency services. We did get, we should be getting full amount, um, because we did have more than our allotment that we should claim. Um, I'm working with John Daniels about amending that to the area for one fifty-one for those agreements for one being on. So I'm waiting to hear back from that. I'll have a conference call with them sometime later this week. Um, let's see, um, I'd also have some levy information for the various projects like the one fifty-one separation. I'll probably just send those spreadsheets to you. They'll list the breakdown of the payments over the fifteen years to be different. We'll probably do a combination loan agreement for the smaller projects and then the one fifty-one will be separate, since it'll be the largest amount. Um, but so at least you probably know what it's going to do levy wise, if somebody asks you what's it going to cost? On their taxes, so you at least know how much per thousand. Um, I did have them run several scenarios depending on how much we're willing, so. For those, um, we'll know more when we have actual dollars, especially from the three separation. We just had its conferences the end of this week, so six through the eighteen. They had kind of limited space even virtually, so I think if you're still interested in something, let me know. I'll help you see if we can still get anybody signed up for everything we can see. Um, September twenty eighth through October first, Linda, Ginger and I are going to be doing our big meeting for planning the whole system upload. So just know that week's going to be a little, a little less phone answering that week. So we'll be talking on the phone with them about planning our launch. That's it.
Council members have any questions from that? Thanks for that detailed report. Ten point zero, mayor and council reports. Ten point one, mayor's report. Uh, we received this after the agenda was put together. Uh, it's, it is a proclamation, it's time sensitive. So I'm going to read this during the mayor's report as in, as when we meet in two weeks again. This will be, have been expired. Constitution week proclamation, whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty marks the two hundred and thirty-third anniversary of drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America. By the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to afford official recognition. To this anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas public law nine one five guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America. Designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as constitutionally. Now therefore, I Rod Smith by virtue of authority vesting me as mayor of the city of Animosa, Iowa, in the city of Animosa, Iowa. Do hereby proclaim the week of seven, September seventeenth through twenty-third as constitutionally. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas of the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven. By vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Remembering that lost rights can never be regained. I do have an update in relationship to Old Dubuque Road. Uh, it was, I believe it was on the first day of school, uh, Sheriff Robert and Chief Hoyt. Were out at the, the middle school area, the intersections, uh, the, uh. Also the T intersection by the LCC, uh, there's a little bit of a report that, uh, was submitted. Uh, so this is from Sheriff Robert. Uh, he sent the drone up and recorded the five-way intersection from seven fifty-seven to eight thirteen AM. Uh, traffic flow into and out of the middle school was smooth. Other than the occasional school bus traffic leaving the north lot of the middle school parking lot. There were no delays entering or exiting the middle school off of Old Dubuque Road. Uh, Chief Hoyt was watching the intersection of East Main Street and Scott Street. He reported no change in traffic flow or problems related to a backup. I will give Chief, uh, a moment to further detail. Sheriff Robert concludes, at this time, I would make no recommendation as to any change. I think with no through traffic, traveling on Old Dubuque Road, this has greatly improved the efficiency. Of traffic flow to and from the schools. That summarized his report. Uh, Chief, do you have anything to add on what you've seen on the first day in school? Or post, uh, your observations that day?
I don't think I have much. Um, the classes here in Animosa are split, so. That mayor may not have some effect on the traffic flow. No, I didn't contact the superintendent. Just briefly discussed with him how we want to see what the new normal traffic flow was out there. I don't know whether we've achieved that quite yet, just because of the COVID. Class schedule, um, but if it's anything close to it, it is, it is flowing, uh, very well.
That's, I, that's all I have for mayor's report this evening. Does anybody have questions or comment for me? Uh, ten point two, council reports.
Um, I got, got this email from tourism the other day. And it said, and this is for last year, so not for twenty twenty. Tourist spending in Jones County was at twenty-four point zero six million, which was a one point three eight percent increase over the previous year. People employed by tourism was up two point one two percent over the previous year. And local tax, um, collected was up three point one three percent over the previous year. So going forward, I'm sure twenty twenty's numbers are not going to be as positive. But at least there was an increase, and hopefully in the future, we can get back to that.
On a solid placement on September first, and basically it was housekeeping. They tabled for their entries on the, on the, uh. For the recyclables until they get a report from somebody and figure out they're going to break even or what. Basically, that's all.
We met last week, um, Park Street. Beth actually joined us, um, the pump room, they did get that done for the pool. Um, we actually met over the pool just to see a few things in person. Um, just pump rooms done. Probably as we speak, or maybe it's already done, they, they were in-house to power wash the tire shell and paint the shell of the pool. Uh, and we, this winter, they're going to take down the entire slide, the company we talked about last week. Take down the support, take down the whole slide, um, to their facility over the winter and, and resurface and repaint it, and then it'll be put up in the spring. So, she's still working on the new gutters, they're going to be great on the outside. Good improvements there.
Jeff, I did see that the, uh, dog waste station was placed.
Yeah.
They, how much use is it getting? Have they put their eyes on it yet?
No, they haven't. It's, it's right there, right by the horse chute, right across, right there, and I think she was going to, maybe at least put one downtown. I want to say she wore five or six.
I, I just think it's a, a very good amenity to be offering the, the residents and.
It's very, they just have me provided, hopefully make less of a mess.
All right, uh, so does council have any questions for those that gave reports? Nice work, everyone, with those meetings. Nothing else, I'll move on to eleven point zero, public comment for items not on the agenda. Uh, Rebecca, I'll turn this over to you for now. Uh, Rebecca, I'll turn this over to you for now. Is there anyone that would like to address the council?
Not seeing anybody yet, but I'll give you a second by just re-explaining that if you would like to speak, uh, you can either raise your hand. Um, or by sending me a chat. I, um, I'm not seeing anything come up. So.
I will move to 12.0 closed session.
I'll make the motion that we enter into closed session for Iowa code 21.51C. To discuss strategy with council. Second.
Was that you, John?
Yeah.
Motion by Rich, second by John to enter into closed session. Patrick, are you? Are you out there?
I am.
Uh, do you, are you, will you confirm that we are all right to enter into this closed session?
I can do that. We're in a situation now with these, uh, these represented parties. Wherein if we don't reach a resolution of this, we're going to end up in court. And I think that that is, that's probably imminent at this point. Uh, and we need to discuss our strategy, uh, in closed session. So it's not to disclose that to them and to, to third parties. So I would say that we have, it's my opinion that we have the legal right to go into closed session under 21.51C of the Iowa code.
All right. Thank you for confirming. So we have a motion by Rich, second by John to enter into the closed session. Does this have to be a roll call? No, go ahead.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Motion by council to enter into closed session, period requirement. Uh, let's do what's necessary to secure virtual and the premises for entering into closed session.
Okay, I'm going to send, um. Patrick and all three council, uh, streams into a breakout room. And you may have to agree on all of, all of the screens to enter that breakout room. Just a heads up. So.
All right, we will let Beth take care of that.
So there we go. Okay, everybody who remains, um. You are more than welcome to stick around and wait until the council is finished with their closed session. I do not know how long it will take, but you are more than welcome to hang around. Um, I will stay here and keep recording until they return.
Rebecca?
Yes.
I don't know how to get us out of the session on the ICAS.
I can close the, uh, close the room, so that'll force them out.
Let us know back when you've completed.
Uh, the, uh, it's all closed, so we're all back in open session.
All right. 12.3, direct legal counsel to proceed is advised by the city attorney in closed session.
Second.
We have a motion by Rich, second by Kay, uh, as stated to move forward as advised by the city attorney in closed session. Do we need any further discussion? How about, does this have to be a roll vote? All those in favor signify with aye. Those nay. Motion to proceed carried unanimously. Uh, Patrick, thank you for your time this evening hanging in there with us, uh, for all your, uh, points during the closed session. If there's nothing, nothing else, we will move to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Thanks, Patrick. Motion by Rich, second by Jay to adjourn. All signify with aye. All nay. Motion to adjourn carried unanimously.